Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Oceanside City Council Workshop, actually, for April 13th, 2022. Row call, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
President.
Deputy Mayor Keim, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Rodriguez is absent today.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the oath of religion stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And today is our council workshop for the budget. And we are going to begin with item number one, general fund overview. We have a report by Jill Moya, Financial Services Director.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Jill Moya, Financial Services Director, and I'm here to provide a presentation on item number one, which is the proposed general fund budget for fiscal year 2223. I'll start with a quick general overview of the proposed budget. We are presenting a balanced budget where expenses are less than revenues and reserves or one-time monies are not used to cover ongoing costs. This proposed budget meets all reserve obligations such as the Healthy Cities and Economic Stabilization Reserves. It also reflects the relaxation of the hiring freeze that was implemented during the pandemic in order to improve service levels for the community. Additionally, we are always keeping in mind council's strategic priorities when considering budget addition recommendations. Here is a high-level look at the proposed fiscal year 2223 general fund budget. Total revenues are $189.19 million, expenses are $186.06 million, and transfers to capital projects are $1.09 million, resulting in a surplus of $2.04 million. Of the proposed $189.19 million revenues, three of the main revenue categories are property tax, sales tax, and TOT. Our property tax and sales tax budgets were developed using technical forecasts created by our property and sales tax consultants. These revenues are expected to increase due to new development and increasing property values. For sales tax and TOT revenues, while the percentage increases of the proposed budgets compared to the current year budgets appear to be high, we believe these budgets to be reasonable based on the 2021 actuals as well as the current trends. You can see, when you look at the actuals for 2021, our TOT was at $9.3 million and sales tax was at $27 million. So the adopted budget for 2122 was adopted being very conservative since we weren't sure what the effects were going to be of the pandemic. But when we closed out the year last year of 2021, we were pleasantly surprised that those revenues came in very strong. So that's why, when you compare this proposed budget to the current year's budget, it looks like a large increase, but it is in line with how the revenues are trending. This graph shows how the revenues have been trending over the last five years. Property tax is in blue, sales tax is in red, and TOT is green. The proposed fiscal year 2223 expenditures are based on current year's budget with a CPI increase of 5% for MNO expenditures. It includes all negotiated salary increases and placeholders for bargaining groups, as well as pension cost increases as calculated per the CalPERS actuarial report. The proposed budget was developed with the current economic environment in mind. In prior years, CPI increases of 0% to 2% were given. Due to the inflation we are currently experiencing, we included a 5% CPI increase in all MNO expenditures, and departments with increases in contracts greater than the 5% CPI increase requested additional budget, which is included in this proposed budget. In addition, $350,000 was added to the fleet fund because of the expected increase to fuel costs. And outside of the proposed budget but pertaining to the current economic environment, our Treasury Manager is monitoring the rising interest rates to take advantage of investment opportunities within our investment policy as they become available. It's important to note that we are continuously monitoring the status of the city's revenues and expenses, and if needed, as we did during the pandemic, we can cut back on expenses or initiate a hiring freeze to manage our costs. As we shared during the five-year forecast presentation in February, the items listed in this slide have already been incorporated into the five-year forecast for the general fund and, as such, are included in the fiscal year 2223 proposed budget. These items include a $500,000 increase to fund fire apparatus replacement, an increase to fund coastal palm tree maintenance, an increase of janitorial services for parks, San Luis Rey in-house mowing, and an electrician for traffic signal maintenance. All other positions listed above recently went to council for approval and are thus included in this budget. In addition to these items already incorporated in forecasts, we have included funding for $167,000 of one-time costs and $1.4 million for ongoing costs in the 2223 proposed budget, which will be funded from the previously noted $2 million surplus. One-time items include a decrease in library costs, an additional budget for public works for tree maintenance, and traffic camera replacement. Ongoing MNO costs include about $540,000 for increases to property liability insurance. City clerk items are for public record request software and agenda management software. Financial services, development services, and fire increases are related to contract increases greater than the 5% CPI, as well as $12.5,000 in addition for fire for the PTSD prevention program. Neighborhood services increases needed to allow the Club 55 program to continue. Parks and Rec increases are needed to right-size the budget for water costs at the pools and community centers, and to allow for programming to continue at the senior centers, which is no longer provided free of charge from Miracosta. Police's increases are requested due to increased program costs for the School Resource Officer Program and loss of funding from the NCTD contract. The total for these MNO increases is $926,000. We are proposing adding three positions to development services, two of which would generate offset through charges to CIP projects, and a code enforcement officer which is needed to conduct state-mandated mobile home inspections. For fire, we are proposing adding an office specialist and three full-time EMTs. The EMT positions are expected to generate a revenue offset from ambulance billing. This proposed budget also includes the addition of a Parks and Rec director, which is partially offset due to the general fund no longer covering a percentage of the housing director or other housing support staff, who in prior years were supporting the Parks and Rec Division, but no longer are. These positions will be fully funded by the housing funds going forward. We are also proposing reclassing two positions in police to better align with their needs for a net increase of $23,000. We are proposing an additional parking enforcement officer and professional assistant for public works, which is expected to have revenue offset from parking citation revenue, and a maintenance worker to help with beach area maintenance. This results in a total of $1.4 million increase to ongoing costs. That concludes this presentation. Staff recommends that City Council direct staff to return on June 8, 2022, for final budget adoption and include all recommendations outlined in the proposed general fund budget for fiscal year 2223. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Moya. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
We'll go through the other presentations unless we need to ask questions, starting now. Councilmember Rodriguez, would you like to wait until all the presentations are completed?
That's up to you, Madam Mayor. If we have questions specific to this, it may be more appropriate and productive to just get them out of the way, and that way at the end we can move on to motion.
All right. Well, there'll be input from the public as well. So if we start asking questions after each one, then we'll have to allow the public. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and do the presentations and write down your questions so you don't forget it? Thank you. So the next presentation is the utilities non-CIP budget overview, and we have a presentation by Ms. Carey Dale, our Water Utilities Director.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Carey Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to propose on the fiscal year 2223 Water Utilities operating budget. I'll go through each of the utilities separately, starting with water and recycled water. As you know, pure water was one of our big projects that came online this year, should pay dividends in the future for our ratepayers. With that, though, there was a cost increase of approximately $4 million to the operating budget, consisting of additional electrical expenses, personnel expenses, chemicals, and those sorts of things associated with the project. Coming out of the pandemic, fortunately, we were able to move forward with no rate increases in 2022 as well as 2023, with the exception of pass-throughs from the Metropolitan Water District as well as the San Diego County Water Authority, and a small increase in the watershed protection fee. As directed by City Council earlier this year, the department also used $1.98 million in litigation proceeds to offset any of the revenue shortfalls. Coming out of the pandemic, we do continue to have some amount of delinquent accounts in all three utilities. We were able to develop an Oceanside Rate Relief Program as directed by City Council, which uses some of the litigation proceeds to provide some one-time funds to our customers to get their bills paid down. The results on this page show where we are to date. This slide shows our revenues and expenditures from the previous year as compared to that proposed for fiscal year 2223. In the sewer utility, we also have no rate increases for the next two calendar years. We're also using nearly $1.5 million in reserves to offset revenue shortfalls. We are anticipating approximately a 10% increase in energy costs, as well as increases in the chemicals that are used heavily at our treatment facilities. We are proposing one position change and upgrade to a plant operator to a plant supervisor. No new programs or initiatives being put forward. A continued effort to obtain grant funds, and readying infrastructure for the closure of the La Salina wastewater treatment facility. This table also shows previous year budget revenues and expenditures, as well as those proposed in the 2223 budget. In solid waste and recycling, you will see a CPI increase coming to you in the next month for the contracted waste management CPI increase of 4.7%. We are requesting to add one position, an environmental specialist, to address organics programs associated with AB 1383. We are using $600,000 from rate stabilization this year and are continuing to put efforts forward for grant funding. This table also shows previous year revenue and expenditures, as well as those proposed for 2223. And that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending that City Council direct staff to return on June 8 for adoption of the budgets presented here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. The next presentation is the Capital Improvement Project, CIP, for Budget Overview Report by Mr. Brian Thomas, our City Engineer, and Lindsay Leahy, Water Utilities Principal Engineer.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Brian Thomas. I'm the City Engineer, and shortly after me will be Lindsay Leahy from our Water Utilities Department. Our proposed capital improvement budget for the fiscal year 2223 is comprised of several different funds, including transnet, thoroughfare, drainage districts, SB1, parks, municipal buildings, enterprise funds including the water, sewer, and harbor funds, miscellaneous grants, and our voter-approved Measure X. Our total combined estimated expenditures for this year is right around $164 million. Pie chart shows the breakdown, with water and sewer being some of our largest, along with Measure X being a significant contributing fund to the improvement projects. Most of this year's projects are carry-forward projects or annual projects like street rehabilitation programs. Most of the maintenance programs in past years have been removed from—oh, Remnants—have been removed from the general CIP project. And new and future projects will be noted on slides, as well as the unfunded projects moving forward. Of important note is our development impact fee revenues began trending downward in 2021. Our public facility fees alone is insufficient for upcoming projects impacted by the growth of the city. Our impact fees comprise approximately 30% of the revenue needed for new projects, with the balance coming from general fund allocations. If development projects continue to decrease, the amount available through the development impact fees also decreases, which results in the need for additional general fund allocations. Currently, we have four development impact fees collected on development. That is thoroughfare and signals, citywide drainage fees, park fees, and our public facility fees. The programs up here, I'm just going to skip through them. These are some of our highlights with our slurry seal, some of our larger projects with bridge replacements and retrofits, gas tax funding our street overlay projects and storm drain improvements, our pavement management program for this year. We're looking to fund approximately 27 centerline miles of slurry and two centerline miles of full-depth reclamation and 16 centerline miles of overlay. For our drainage project, most of our funds for the citywide drainage funds from 510, 516 are going for the San Luis Rey River Clearing Project, as well as the Cleveland Storm Drain Upgrade, which will be out to bid in the next few weeks. We have quite a few parks that we are moving forward with this year, as well as next year, including lighting at Mansfield Cannon Park, Dog Facility Study, and the Prince Memorial Skate Park are all moving forward. Our harbor fund, Public Works Department with Hamed Bahaduri, will be talking about that in his presentation coming up. Our municipal building funds contribution would include Fire Station Number Eight Design, Fire Training Tower, and general plan update. Our operating budget from Fund 501, undergrounding of utilities, sand replacement, and our bluff repair, as well as bluff stair repair. We continue to seek grants through various entities, including CDBG, the Federal Highway Administration, Sandag. Our thoroughfare projects include College Boulevard, our citywide circulation element update, Melrose Height widening, and the College Boulevard Canalever Bridge Design and Environmental. Measure X continues to fund projects, as noted on the screen, including street rehabilitation projects, the pure rehab, the concrete portion of the design, and relocation of Fire Station Number One. And we have our unfunded projects, and, as you can see, we have quite a number of them. So I'll turn it over to Lindsay now.
Good afternoon, Lindsay Leahy, Principal Water Engineer. I will be presenting the capital improvement budget, or the proposed capital improvement budget for the Water Utilities Department. The combined total of the water and sewer capital improvement budget for next fiscal year 2223 is just over $101 million, with approximately $50 million per program water and sewer. This is split between the water fixed asset replacement, water connection, sewer fixed asset replacement, and the sewer connection funds. Currently, we have over $200 million in water projects, either in design or construction, and over $100 million in sewer projects in design and construction. There are 20 existing project accounts in the water recycled water fund, and this shows high-level projects of interest for the water and recycled water program. The water and recycled water program also includes us aggressively pursuing grant funding, and to date of the projects included in next year's proposed budget, we have received over $28 million in grant funding and have over $16 million in pending grant applications to assist in offsetting the costs of these projects. We continue to develop local supplies for the ratepayers of Oceanside, and with the budgeted projects in next fiscal year's program, we estimate upon completion having over 44% local water supply once complete. The department continues to expand the upper and lower recycled water systems with lower Phase 1 and upper Phase 1 projects. And as Carrie mentioned in a previous presentation, the pure water Oceanside project is operational as of the end of 2021, and construction is estimated to be completed this summer. The department continues to implement the advanced metering infrastructure program, and to date, over 7,000 meters have been converted throughout the city. This project is on schedule to be completed in winter of 2023. And the department continues to improve the reliability of critical infrastructure with repair and replacement of our water assets. There are 24 existing project accounts for the sewer fund, and the projects of interest are listed here. The department continues to proceed with centralization of wastewater flows to San Luis Rey and plans on bringing a design contract to council in May of this year, which would be approximately complete in 2028. This includes the design of Buccaneer Lift Station, which staff is continuing to do. We are also proceeding with relocating a sewer line from Loma Alta Creek into Oceanside Boulevard, which is—its design is complete and will be advertised for bid in the next few months, as well as continuing replacing and rehabilitating our aged infrastructure. That's the conclusion of the capital program budget. Staff is recommending that City Council direct staff to return on June 8 for the final budget adoption and include all recommendations outlined in the proposed capital improvement projects budget for 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy.
Madam Mayor, we have two speakers on this item.
Okay. We're going to wait until—we're almost done. We're next on the item number four, which is harbor budget overview. We have a report by Mr. Hamed Bahaduri, Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of City Council. I'm Hamed Bahaduri, Public Works Director. I would like to present to you a brief overview of the harbor budget for the upcoming fiscal year. First, onto the revenues. The primary source of the harbor revenues is slip rental. As you know, we have 950 slips, 853 of them are on the long-term lease, and about 50 of them are commercial at various rates, and 50 of them are reserved for transient or guests, which are charged different. The long-term leases are $16 per year, per month, and then for the guest is $1.25 per day. The harbor facility leases, that's pretty much fixed. It has a varying factor in there, depending on the income of those enterprises, but mostly it's about $1.4, $1.5 million per year. The parking is comprised of four different components. There are parking machines, there are parking meters, there are annual parking permits, and there are special events. The bulk of the revenue from the parking comes from the parking machines, and there is a split between the harbor and the general funds. Parking lots 11, 11A, 11B, and 12 are split 75, 25. 75% goes to harbor and 25% to general fund. Seven and 10 are 50/50 split. On the meters, 30% of the revenues from the parking meter go to harbor and the rest to general funds. On the permits, it's 70% for the harbor, 30% general fund, and the events, special events is nominal, it's about $8,000. 25%, $2,000 goes to harbor. So those four components make up the $1.067 million that you see on your slide. On the fees, waitlist, transfers, and management, our transfer fees are amongst the lowest. In our competing market, we are $20 per foot for transfer. Our waitlist is pretty substantial. The harbor's in demand, it's about $90 a year. To be on the waitlist, we have about 300 people on the waitlist. Inspection and miscellaneous is about the same as last year, not a whole lot of change there. The investment income is from the pool of the money that Finance Department manages for different departments. On the expenses, the $3.1 million maintenance, about $1.3 million of that is staff salaries and benefits, and the rest is contractors' material supply. For the police item, the harbor pays for eight full-time police officers, and there are partial payments for portions of salaries of one captain and two lieutenants. The administration is the administration of the harbor staff at about $1.1 million. And tideland lease is the money that the harbor pays back to the city for the lease of the property. Last year it was $788, today—I mean, this year it's going to be—I mean, by last year, I mean this year, current year, $788, and future it's going to be $822. Lifeguard, $293,000. Last year, or this year is $219,000. That's a percentage of the frontage that harbor has on the beach relative to the overall coastline for the city. Unlike the police, that's per person, this is a percentage of overall pay. Property management, $38,000, the money that harbor pays for our property management and staff to manage the real estate that the city and harbor— and staff to manage the real estate that the city and harbor owns in that area. Depreciation is calculated by finance as given there. Debt service, $131,000. That's comprised of two components. One is paying off a bond that was sold back in 2013 for about $2 million to consolidate and pay off loans from three different departments. That loan, that bond will be paid off in '23, '24 of the $131,000. $103,000 is for the payment of the bond. Next fiscal year, '23, '24, we will have a payment of $1,060, $106,050, and then that bond will be paid off, so that expenditure will be reduced. The other component, the 131, is paying off the loan from the Fleet Services in the amount of $24,000 per year for a loan that was borrowed from the Fleet Services account for $500,000 for a police boat, and that will be paid off in 2036. And the miscellaneous, the miscellaneous, they vary, are pretty much the same. This year, we have a pretty robust capital improvement project in front of you. There is a J dock replacement that we're gonna carry over. We will be carrying over about $436,000 into next year. We may not need all of that and may go back to other projects. So far for this year, we have spent $40,000 on that, and we have a $200,000 open PO on that contract. There are a few new projects that the harbor staff are recommending. Harbor infrastructure repairs, that's about $1.5 million, $1.491 million. These are repairs of varying kinds on the slips and docks and so on and so forth. And our harbor dock approaches and gates, which are in dire need for repair, about $400,000. Excuse me. Then we have a matching portion for the city for the harbor fishing pier. That is a grant from the California Department of Parks and Recreation of Boating and Waterways, and the amount of 261,000 our matching is 87,500. There is also the Jolly Roger Dock Replacement, which is a grant from the California Conservation, Wildlife Conservation Board, and the amount of, I believe, 670,000 and 212,000 is the city match. This will put the total capital improvement for the project, for the projects in the harbor at about 2.2 million, 2.19. I need to mention that the 2.91 million will be paid from the $3.6 million reserve funds that we have for the harbor, which will reduce the amount of reserve to about 1.4 million. We may have some saving in the J dock replacement, say 1.5 million will be left in the reserve fund. This is one of the two reserve funds that the harbor has. The other reserve fund is an amount of $950,000 for the rainy days, for natural disasters and so on and so forth. God forbid if it happens, we will have that, we will not touch that amount. And as you know, we are also going through financial studies for the harbor, identifying long-term needs and needs for additional revenues. That study will be presented to you at a later date. And I would like to acknowledge and thank Petchafon, who is our harbor manager here, and Carmen Ryan, and these two individuals have been instrumental in putting this thing together, this budget, especially Carmen, who puts the whole department budget together. And both Ted and I will be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Hamid. Next is item number five, Measure X Budget Overview. We've got Michael Gossman, our Assistant City Manager.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager. I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the proposed year four spending plan for Measure X. The Measure X Citizens Oversight Committee recommended the proposed plan for approval on March 10th. They recommended it unanimously. This plan includes continuation of all prior approved programs and projects and a couple of new programs that I'll talk about in a minute. Year four total revenues were about estimated at $21 million. This includes both revenues received and some carryover from unspent prior-year funds. At this point, we estimate revenues over the life of Measure X to exceed expenditures by $8.3 million, and staff will be bringing recommendations for new or expanded programs and projects to the COC in December with, on how to address that $8.3 million in excess revenues. The spending plan itself is made, is $21 million, $17 million in available revenues, and, or I'm sorry, it's at $21 million in the spending plan, $27 million in available revenues, which leaves for a $6.7 million in carryover for future years. We're continuing all of the ongoing projects from prior years, and as I mentioned, we are adding a couple of new programs. One of great import is the Community Services Officer Model Implementation in the Police Department. Chief Armijo is available to discuss that if you had any questions. We are also recommending $300,000 annually for traffic calming measures, and we have staff available to answer questions regarding that program as well. Also, and really this is related to year five, but we're tagging $2 million of Measure X funds for work-related, really pre-design or other things for what we're gonna do once the police headquarters expansion relocation study is released. We also conduct a seven-year expenditure plan that looks out toward the end of Measure X, which ends in 2026. As I'd mentioned, the total cost to continue and complete all Measure X items, programs, and projects is about $47.8 million, and there's, these costs are fully covered by anticipated revenues. Recommendation is for the City Council to direct staff to return on June 8th for final budget adoption, and I'm available to answer any question.
Thank you very much. So let's go to the public. Do we have requests to speak?
Yes, we do. We have two requests to speak. Our first speaker is Tom Lichterman, to be followed by Joan Bachmann.
Good afternoon, council members and honorable mayor. My name is Tom Lichterman. I'm the chairman of the Oceanside Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We are a citizens advisory committee to the city on matters affecting cycling and walking in the city. We have over 75 members who are concerned about improving the infrastructure and programs that are available to support cycling and walking in the community. In 1995, this city and the other four jurisdictions along the Sprinter Corridor all entered into an MOU stating that they wanted to develop a cycling and pedestrian trail known as the Inland Rail Trail. It was your list of unfunded projects a while ago. This was a goal of the communities along the corridor and that they would work together to try to make that a reality. Here we are 27 years later. The project is now in Sandag's hands. As of the early 2000s, it was transferred to Sandag, and Oceanside's residents are still waiting to see something get started on this project. While there's been significant progress on other segments of the line, including Escondido, San Marcos County, and Vista, there is no design, there is no planning, and there's not even any discussion of the Oceanside segment. It just stops right at Melrose. The city has tried three times to get a Caltrans Sustainable Communities Planning Grant to fund an initial alignment study so that we can at least determine where the trail can be built and where workarounds would be needed. Caltrans has denied the request three times, the most recent being just this past week. We have commented to Sandag during the regional plan development period on the need to get started on the trail since NCTD's future double-tracking plans could render the current space that's out there available for the trail obsolete if they put a track in that, in that area. Sandag has declined to get going with the project, saying that the project is not in their early action program despite the adoption of the Regional Bike Weight Plan a number of years ago, including Oceanside. Sandag's RTP puts the completion of the trail in Oceanside in the year 2035. That means it will have taken Sandag 40 years to deliver this project, a bike trail. That is not a very impressive achievement, given the very significant proposals in the RTP you're all familiar with right now. So I am appealing today to the council to see if we could get an initial alignment study funded through the city's budget process for the inland rail trail, include something in your capital improvement program to bring this project one step closer to shovel-ready status.
Thank you, Mr. Lichterman.
Hello, Joan Bachmann, Seaside Neighborhood. This is wide-ranging for the entire city, so I have a number of items. First, I'll start with Buena Vista Audubon needs a crosswalk. We have purchased the land across from the nature center, and we would like a crosswalk. That has been submitted. Also, the traffic calming, the seaside neighborhood has no cul-de-sacs. All of our streets are open and available to anyone who wants them, and we are doing our part, but we need traffic to go slowly through our neighborhood. So please, traffic calming for Seaside Neighborhood. Under the harbor, the entire slope of the north end of the harbor is weedy, flammable grasses. It's fountain grass. It is a terrible grass, and it needs to be, we need a completely new approach to that area, and so please fund a complete re-landscape of that. And I'll remind you that I designed the salt bush along 500 feet of El Camino at Mesa, and the city, I don't think, does any maintenance on that. So we have an approach for that. So please, let's get rid of the weedy grasses and all the costs associated with getting rid of them on a regular basis. Okay, now I'll move to El Corazon, which was my main reason for coming here. And we have the Garrison Creek Trail. The Phase Two is being designed right now with a lot of friends of El Corazon input, and we would really like to fund the construction of the Phase Two trail. The Phase One portion is one mile, but you have to go out and back on the same path, and it's well-used. The second path would complete the loop and add some elevation. So we estimate about 150K to do that, and so please, as soon as possible, fund that. We applied either the COVID funds or the CIP, whichever one funds first. We do need to get that done. Secondly, Park One is under design now. We will need Park One construction and the fields there, and so we want to make sure that issue gets resolved. And then park design, we're doing a lot of grading. There is enough material moving that is 100 acres, eight feet deep on El Corazon, and we're just gonna move it around and put it wherever and then come back and design the park. So this is a problem. We don't put money into the grading, the park design, so that we can use that grading more effectively, and we need to do that. So right now, I'm gonna, I've been talking to the developer, I'm talking to everybody, I'm talking to Public Works about changing the grading plan right now because it's going to take out our loop road. So we need to be thinking ahead for that, but because we've never funded park design and a mass grading of it, we then don't have any basis to make the decisions. We've lost out on developer offer to grade baseball fields and Park One and enhance Park Six. So we will continue to work on that, but right now, we really want 150K for Garrison Creek Phase Two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz Ray.
If, members of the public, if you wish to speak, please assign, get a slip to the city clerk. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Liz Ray, and I'd like to address the harbor's budget. I have one question. We're in an enterprise fund. All of our slips are taken. Most of our leases are taken for our merchants. If we are going to be receiving more funding or more in our budget for revenue, I'd like to know where is this coming from? If we can't, if we're not going to be increasing anything, since we can't, we're basically a landlocked, are we, is it going to be a recommendation that our slip rent go up? This is something that's troublesome. We have a lot of upcoming capital improvements coming, and another big project that we are going to be undertaking. This is very concerning. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only other slip I have is for off-agenda items.
Okay.
Wayne, did you wanna talk on the budget or an off-agenda topic? No? Okay. So the other, only slip I have is for an off-agenda item.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So Steph, did you have some responses at all? Let's see. Mr. Lichterman asked questions about the inland rail trail.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and council members, I think I can give a shot at answering most of the comments that were made.
Thank you, Mr. Berg.
Relative, relative to the inland rail trail, Mr. Lichterman is correct that we have been unsuccessful thus far in getting grant funding. I will say that we were recently successful in getting a grant fund to complete the planning for the coastal rail trail, which was big news for us, but certainly, we are gonna be reapplying again for the inland rail trail, so we will keep trying and do our best to try and secure that funding. I imagine it's only a matter of time before we are successful, since it is actually a priority project of ours and certainly does have value and staff size to continue pursuing. Relative to some of the comments that were made by Ms. Bachmann, you did receive correspondence from representatives from the Buena Vista Lagoon Audubon Society regarding a request for enhanced pedestrian crossing across Coast Highway to service some additional land that they recently were able to acquire to expand their facility, and it's anticipated that there will be more pedestrian traffic across that stretch of Coast Highway in the future. We actually had applied for grant funding in the past for that project. We were unsuccessful. It was a Sandag grant. We can continue to apply for grants. We estimate the cost of that project to be roughly 150,000 out the door. That includes a design and construction, and certainly, if we receive direction from council to explore including that in the current CIP plan, we're happy to do that. Relative to El Corazon, there were a number of comments made. Of course, Ms. Bachmann made the comment requesting additional funding consideration for the Phase Two trails. As you do know, we do have some revenue that comes in, I believe it's roughly a million dollars annually from the different users out there that go towards improvements within El Corazon. I'm not necessarily sure if we need to tackle any external funding sources beyond that to complete the trail, since it is a relatively affordable item, and I would probably wanna report back to council on that one before making a recommendation to include some other funding source outside of the revenue we already received from the park users. There was a general comment made regarding grading at that location. It is something that we're definitely sensitive to, and I've had those communications in the past with Ms. Bachmann and others regarding grading, and certainly don't wanna be in a situation where we are impacting the build-out of the park and the roadway system inadvertently. And so, you know, we, I can assure you that we'll at all costs try and avoid that through the current grading operations that are anticipated out there in the future. I believe that was it. I'm not sure if I, if there were any other questions that came up that I didn't address, and I'm happy to give those a shot.
With respect to Ms. Ray's question about the harbor, that's gonna be going to the Harbor and Beaches Advisory?
Yes, so I think her, Ms. Ray's questions were more related to, you know, potential future revenue sources to address the necessary capital improvements that we know are needed out there. Just to provide a little bit of information on that, we are in the process of wrapping up a needs assessment for the harbor. We do expect that that study is going to identify several million dollars worth of long-term improvements that need to be made to those facilities. When we bring that plan forward to the City Council for its review, we will also be bringing forward potential funding sources to cover that funding, and, you know, I envision we'll be presenting the City Council with the menu of options for additional revenue. You know, slip rates certainly will be on that menu, of course, along with probably at least 10 other items, you know, in terms of potential revenue sources out there, but if, that's just gonna be a separate process, and it'll be a public process, and everyone will have the opportunity to weigh in on those choices that will need to be made. I will say that there are gonna be some difficult choices because, as I mentioned, there are several million dollars worth of improvements that need to be made out there, and we'll need to figure out the funding source for those improvements down the road.
That will first go to the Harbor and Beaches Advisory?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. And then I do wanna clarify one thing as well related to the harbor. As all of you know, and several members of the public understand, we have been studying the future of, the future provision of public safety services out in the harbor, and we expect to be coming back to the City Council this summer with some recommendations on that. Nothing in the current proposed budget is reflective of that effort, so I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on that point. If there are additional financial considerations as part of that plan, that'll be coming back to you separately.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So to council for discussion on all five presentations, if you could, when you ask the question, ask which of these you're referring to so that we can have the proper staff person for your questions? And we won't count the time that the, that the staff comes up to the podium. All right? Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. First, I want to thank staff for putting together those excellent presentations. It's exciting to see the future finances and opportunities that the city of Oceanside faces. I think our future looks bright. I think there's still so much we need to get done, and that depends on revenues, and that depends on partnering with the private sector and being a business-friendly city. And it was really nice to see the TOT taxes that we're collecting on our hotel rooms and short-term vacation rentals are, you know, facilitating close to $9 million in revenue for our city. And I look forward to seeing that increase over time. My biggest concerns when I met with staff ahead of time was preparing for inflation, everything from gas, supply chain costs, administrative, you know, supplies. Everything's going up in cost, and we have to be wise as a city to prepare for those additional costs, especially if they continue and then things head into a recession. So I was very happy to see the CPI calculations factoring in a 5% placeholder, so to speak, for, to absorb those additional costs, so we're not surprised by them in the future. And our city is moving forward with staff in partnership with our city treasurer on making decisions as interest rates increase to help offset inflation. There may be investment opportunities that we have some flexibility with as a city to take advantage of so that we're maximizing our city's portfolio and revenues for the city. I think the most exciting item I was able to see that I hope my colleagues get on board with was the creation of a, in essence, standalone Parks and Rec department with a Parks and Rec director that is specifically focused on creating opportunities and managing our infrastructure of Parks and Rec here in the city of Oceanside. The future of our city, our youth, depends on having the quality of life and open space required to facilitate youth sports programs, you know, and a robust senior citizens programs and opportunities at our parks and fully-funded programs. And so I think this individual is key to improving our Parks and Rec department. And I just want to reiterate, and I've done that with the city manager, Jonathan Brago, that whoever this individual is, they have to be connected with all pillars of our community and prioritize the residents of Oceanside, you know, with respect to the programs they create and move forward on. There was a line item for encampment cleanup. We received a comment, I believe it was today. There was an additional line item for encampment cleanup. I know personally, I've called in several illegal encampments where city staff and code enforcement have moved on offering services and providing them notice to move. But when they move, their trash and a lot of paraphernalia stays. And so that needs to be contracted out and cleaned up. And this is a work in progress. It's a constant enforcement cleanup to keep our city beautiful and safe. And so I don't personally think $20,000 is enough. So my first question, there's a lot of statements. My first question to the city is, I know we've budgeted for a specific amount. I know this is overage, but I think potentially, we're going to need to prepare on significantly more and just want comments from staff on that.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, yeah, as a point of clarification into Councilmember Rodriguez's point, the $20,000 is actually supplemental funding. We currently budget about 240,000 in total, and this would take it up to 260,000. Quite frankly, that, you know, we haven't run into an issue where we've run out of funding yet. Our biggest challenge, honestly, has been finding a contractor who's willing to do the work. It's a very specialized line of work, and it's difficult to get responsive contractors to do the work. But we feel pretty comfortable with the total dollar amount that would be allocated towards cleanup, but certainly it is something that we will continue to monitor. We also, of course, have Measure X funding available if need be to tap into, in addition to some other funding sources, if we find that that is not enough.
Okay. Thank you. Two other comments. One is with respect to our cannabis businesses that have been entitled and have moved forward on setting up their businesses. At what point will there be a line item incorporated into the budget on annual revenues from, from those legal businesses in Oceanside?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, very good question. As a matter of fact, I was, had a discussion with our staff this past week about what we're going to be doing with the revenue. I think there's about $100,000 that we're projecting. And so to answer your question in terms of when it'll come back is a line item. I would imagine it'll be coming back to you very soon. Actually, I don't necessarily know if it needs to, you know, require some sort of an amendment to the budget per se, but we do have that revenue coming in. And so I do want to work with staff to figure out the best way to spend that money. I imagine it'll be on a combination of education and enforcement activity. But we will bring that back to council in a public setting and get some direction in terms of how you want to allocate that funding.
Absolutely. I think, you know, we made a promise to the community that, you know, we don't want our children and high schoolers participating, you know, in that and being exposed to that, and then also the illegal operators, you know, maybe some sort of efforts with the police department on those initial funds that we're, revenues to move on those promises that we made to the community to address any impacts and concerns. Thank you. Last thing I want to say is just a comment on the harbor. I look forward to seeing the study that's coming out, but we have a, we have one of the nicest harbors, in my opinion, in San Diego County, but it's kind of a diamond in the rough. We have a lot of expenses and docks that need to get replaced, and we have limited revenue sources. And we have a lot of parking lot, you know, surface parking lot space. And I foresee opportunities of underground parking, land leases, development on residential, commercial. That's really what it's going to take to beautify that harbor and create the revenues we truly need to create to replace the docks and meet the infrastructure demands of the harbor. And so I look forward to seeing that and significantly improving our harbor here in the city of Oceanside without having to put those costs on the backs of Oceanside slip holders. I think we have a lot of opportunity we can, we can be doing in our harbor. No further comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, I have a question on the CIP budget, number three.
Number three, that would be, Mr. Thomas, Brian? Thank you.
And it's more along the lines of the San Luis Rey River. When we were doing our federal lobbying process through Zoom and other comments, there was a comment made that, given the time it has taken from the completion of the river so far and where the core is and projected timeline to complete, that there is a possibility that the flood insurance reductions that FEMA has granted to all of our residents could be rescinded. Is that possible?
That is a definite possibility. Councilmember Weiss, Honorable Mayor. In our discussions over the past year with FEMA representatives, Region Nine informed us that their higher-ups were looking to decertify the A-99 zone because nothing had been completed with the, with the levy at this point. It's been 20-plus years in creation, I guess, for lack of a better word. So they were looking to decertify that. But we've had some further discussions with them, and as long as somebody is making an effort, they're willing to at least reconsider that at this point. So it's one of those threats that is just kind of hanging out there. What we're doing is, staff's part is, we've re-initiated the annual reports that have fallen off since 2013. They're happy with the reports, but they're more interested in what the core is going to do at the end of the day, when they're going to get back and fix it.
Thank you. And if I recall, the A-99 represents a 50% reduction in insurance premiums?
I believe that's correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And I have a question on number four, the harbor.
Hamid? Yes.
So on your slide, you showed that the revenues coming into the harbor exactly equally expenditures.
That is correct.
So there is no money being set aside for long-term capital or deferred maintenance needs at this time?
Unfortunately, not. And CIP for this year, the 2.2, is being paid from reserve, as I mentioned, from 3.6 million.
So should you get to a point where you can actually do the J-doc riprap for 1.4 million, which I think that's a low estimate, you'll be broke?
Well, I think the harbor is facing challenges. We are at a crossroad. The status of the infrastructure out there has reached to a point that it needs rather immediate attention. Enhance your approval for the financial study, the needs assessment study, which is going to be brought back to you, identifying priorities over the next 15 years for, for doing the infrastructure and maintenance needs that we have to, and identifying potential revenue sources, including what Councilman Rodriguez just mentioned. At this point, however, we need to move forward until that financial study is presented to you and some additional revenues are identified. That's why this year, it was decided to go into the reserve, the 3.6 million dollar reserve, and at least use some of that to continue maintaining what, to the judgment of our harbor manager, touch your phone, and his staff need to be done. But we hope that we can keep them within the budget as presented to you, that we will still have about 1.4 to 1.5 million left in reserve when, when the CIP, as presented to you, is completed, in addition to having the $950,000 reserve for the rainy day.
So you won't be replacing any docks anytime soon?
Well, that's why. That's the urgency for coming in front of you. And again, you know, as interim city manager, where I go mention, that study is being worked on and is being finalized. And the timing of presenting that study to your council will be evaluated and decided by city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Will be what? I didn't hear. Will be what?
The timing will be as set by the city manager.
Okay. Sorry.
I don't disagree that we need to look at all the opportunities. I know the current harbor precise plan allows for development over the Lot One, the free lot that's in the approved precise plan. But, you know, contrary to what Ms. Ray said, there's going to be rate increases to the slips. There's no doubt about that, that they're going to have to go up at some point. As it is an enterprise fund, they're going to have to find a way to raise money. The development opportunities, I think, are valid, but they're going to take a lot longer than the next two or three years. So I just wanted to highlight the fact that right now, there's no additional money going into deferred maintenance or capital needs. So thank you.
Unfortunately, you're absolutely correct. No additional money is going for future maintenance. We are actually spending from reserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Keim.
First, I want to thank staff for the time they've spent with me in preparation for this budget. I know you get 10 minutes from all of us up here, so that's why most of the questions and work with staff is done ahead of time. I think my colleagues share this concern as well. The next few years, we're going to have to manage a way to go forward with possible rising costs and maybe revenues decreasing, and it's going to be a challenge. I think we, I think the staff's put together a conservative and responsible budget that will allow us to be nimble if we have to, which I think is almost certain, address a coming recession, especially if we lose sales tax and property tax dips. We could be, hopefully not in a position like '06 or '07, but we need to be prepared for that just in case. And with that, as we see inflation going up and these different challenges, I, we in council get a chance to talk, but I want to give an opportunity to our city treasurer maybe to talk about the portfolio. You know, I know that right now, you know, if we're making 1% on that money and inflation's at 8, you know, we're losing value there. Do we have any advice for us or any plans going forward so that we can better leverage our money and put us in a better position for the future?
All right. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Keim. We are taking advantage at every opportunity to increase each aspect of the portfolio and the laddered positions. And fortunately, with the rising interest rates, that is making improvements in our portfolio. So where we were at pre-COVID, at 2% in the portfolio yield, and with COVID coming in and all the collibles, we lost $100 million out of the portfolio within nine months with the COVID hitting us and the impacts. And that dropped our portfolio performance down to 1%. Now it's starting to rise, and fortunately, we're looking at improvements at this. Unfortunately, the business community, the business experts are saying, with the amount of inflation that's going on, that a possible recession is looming within the next two years. So, but we're doing everything we can to make our investment portfolio perform at its highest level. We are getting excellent remarks from our colleagues across the state who have come and taken a look. I personally received those. I'll be attending the California Municipal Treasurers Association Conference coming up here in a couple of weeks. And so I'm looking forward to getting more insight and sharing more information with you all after the conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Any other specific strategies that we're going to go for in the next five years? You can share of how we're going to be able to make our portfolio, not lose, in respect to inflation?
Well, again, Councilmember Keim, it's all based on what the market conditions are. So, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't make any predictions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roy. Again, I want to thank staff for preparing a responsible, conservative budget, and I think we're going to be well-prepared if we do have to make hard decisions in the future. Thank you. And if there hasn't, you know, I'll make a motion now to approve staff recommendations and still reserve time for my colleagues to speak.
All right. No other lights? So I'm going to go ahead and address staff and the public. First of all, staff, I just want to give you a million thanks for your work in going through a very, very difficult time, something in the first, for us, going through a pandemic. We did it not knowing how hard it was going to be. We continued with development services, stayed open. Lot of the other services, though, were cut severely because of the need to, to do distancing, especially at the beginning when we really didn't know what we were facing. So we did have a soft freeze. A lot of activity that we usually do didn't happen. And so now, we're, we're basically trying to open and provide all the services that we did before the pandemic. And it's, it's a, it's a transition because, you know, it's kind of like a growing pains all over again. So I know that you're trying to play catch-up with, with being understaffed because of the, you know, the freeze that was going on. And, and, you know, these are very critical positions, some of the vacancies. So I really appreciate our current staff that they are working so hard to make, making up for, you know, work that is not being done by others. I, I am, at this time, wanting to support the Parks and Rec, the funding for a potential Parks and Rec director, but I, I have been asking kind of like the same questions for the last, like, six to eight months, and that is, what would this position do? And so recently, we received a memo, in-house memo, basically saying, okay, here's a chart. And it was a very simple chart. It put the It put the director just on top of the manager with a support position, so two positions, and it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So I continue to, I think it's very, very important to know what would this person be doing. And I understand that there are, we're trying to expand, and we do have a lot of vacancies in terms of trying to provide those activities, especially after-school programming, during the summer programming, even at Brook Street, I know it was closed because staff wasn't able to show up. So I would like to see, because certainly I'm not an expert here, I would like to see some kind of a study, basically, to maybe contract it out, like, what would it take to do the things that, number one, that we were doing before COVID, number two, the things that we have on the dais that we want to see more of, and what would the structure look like? Because looking at the structure, which hasn't changed, I guess, in the eight or nine months that I've been asking, yes, we have had a separate Parks and Rec department, and it's been, the supervisor has been the city manager and city manager's office. Several of our departments actually act that way. That is kind of the chart, right? Each of the departments report to somebody within the city manager's office. So I would like to see that and to basically do the best that we can, use every dollar that we have, really put it in, be as effective as possible. I did want to ask questions about the Park 1, the Phase 2 trail that Ms. Bachmann brought up. I understand from the comments from staff that there are, it sounds like there are funds available to do that, and that would be $150,000. I actually, if that's it and there are funds available, I actually would like to see that happen. Mr. Breggo?
Yes, so just to bring you, honorable mayor and council members, to bring you up to speed in terms of where we're at. So right now, we are actually in the process of designing that Phase 2 trail system, and we're well into that effort, and we have been partnering with the Friends of El Corazon and other interested parties on that design. They've been very engaged. We've walked the site several times and worked out different alignments. That effort was previously authorized by council, and it is underway. I think we're getting very close to a final design. In terms of the construction of the trail, as I mentioned, I think we can present council with some options for funding that. I don't necessarily think the funding of that second phase is that big of a hurdle, quite honestly. It's really not that much money. And if there is a need to come back and seek additional funding, certainly we would come back to council for that authorization, but at this point, I don't think there is that need. I think we can actually handle it with the resources that we have available to us.
Okay, fantastic. And as to the One of Us Lagoon crosswalk, based on the expansion, basically, of the nature center, I believe it was anticipated to be, I think the number was $150,000, which would be considered a small project?
Yeah, that is correct. So we have a couple of options. We can continue to pursue grant funding, as I mentioned before, we have asked for a grant in the past, but that was unsuccessful. We could try and factor it into this year's CIP budget, or we could even give it a shot next fiscal year as well. It's my understanding that the public improvements that are going to be made, that will result in an increase in pedestrian traffic over coast highway are still probably at least two to three years out. So in theory, we could also bring it forward as a CIP project next fiscal year as well.
Next year?
So I think we have an option, and I've communicated that to representatives from the society as well.
So the crosswalk wouldn't take the two to three years, right? It would actually be pretty much within a year?
Yeah, it would be a pretty quick project, actually. There's not a whole lot to it.
Fantastic, all right. So yes, I'm not sure, do we need a motion in a second? I think this is, yeah. All right, well, there is a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and vote on this, but I'm hoping that staff will take into consideration all the comments that we've made on the dais as well as by the public as we move forward. Thank you. Motion in a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. And item number six is public communications on city council matters on non-agenda items. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we have one speaker, Wayne Godinay.
Thank you for having me. Wayne Godinay, Save Our Streets and Samoan Cultural. I want to thank you, mayor, for your continued support for the grassroots communities, sports organizations, athletic and field opportunities to getting access to some of these places in Oceanside for our youth. Also like to thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez, for reaching out to the Samoan community not too long ago. We had an ad hoc committee meeting with about 12 or 13 of the Oceanside local athletic sports groups and organizations. 10 of those groups were headed by Samoan community members or people of Pacific Island heritage, so the timing was perfect for something to be done with regard to getting access to some of our fields and facilities, and also support from Councilmember Jensen for the Parks and Rec concerns that we've had and brought to your attention, and to see you and also Councilmember Keim at the gang summit back in a couple of months ago, hosted by Supervisor Desmond, was really important to see that and hear the report by the Oceanside Police Department Gang Unit with regard to the 11 gangs we have here in Oceanside, when it used to be 14 or 15. So from a grassroots standpoint, I really want to thank you. The ad hoc subcommittee was really important and was sanctioned by the Parks and Rec Commission. They had an ad hoc meeting on March 2nd. I'm going to read a statement here from one of the commissioner members, that she was outgoing to San Diego and moved off of the commission, and when I run out of time, I run out of time. This is important to us because this is a gist of what we've had to deal with in frustration for the last 15 years. The investigation conducted by the ad hoc committee found many places for improvement in access to the city's resources. More specifically, I was distressed, this is Amanda Nelson, a commissioner member. I was distressed and in some cases appalled to hear of the barriers and challenges faced by sports organizations in accessing fields and facilities, particularly in our community's year. During our commission meetings and open forum on March 2nd, community leaders related experiences and city parks and recreation department that amount to systemic inequity in allocation of resource. Their experience was sharply at odds with a presentation given by city staff, which indicated a belief that the current system is working well. I believe we can be confident in initial finding that this is not true. My last comment would be on the two fields at Park 1. If there's any timeline on when Mr. Sudbury can get going on that, I watched the council that night last year. And also with regard, we're seeing the parking lot being developed and constructed now and the soccer arena, but maybe they can get going on the, and give us some time as far as the stakeholders, when that might go. And then from the Samoan cultural celebration, we're going back to the band shelf, July 9th, and any update on the restrooms down there? The new restrooms, will they be completed by then, July 9th? Appreciate it, thank you very much.
I believe they're going to be completed by June 30th?
Pardon me?
They're going to be completed by June 30th. So July 9th, perfect.
I hope so.
And I did have that same question, Mr. Breggo. When do we expect the fields, the two fields, to begin?
June 30th, or July 9th? Yes, so relative to the two fields, actually, there was a meeting this week, as a matter of fact, with Sudbury and our staff to try and get moving on that. It's my understanding in talking to our current Parks Division manager that we should be able to share some information on potential programming opportunities within about the next week now. We have been working out some additional details with Sudbury. I agree, it's been a very slow and somewhat painful process, but I think we're finally getting there with them.
So to start, a month, two months, next year?
I'll defer to our Parks Division manager, who happens to be in the audience.
Does Park 1, Park Site 1, fields, the two fields?
That's why I wanted to clarify. Good afternoon, honorable mayor, members of the city council. I think we're talking about two different things. Park Site 1, I think Mr. Godinay was referring to the development of the new fields. We are currently in the design process. We've hired a design group to design that field, so the construction can't take place until that design process and community outreach has taken place. With respect to what Mr. Breggo was talking about, the two currently constructed sites, we hope to be able to have some positive news next week on a schedule where public access will be able to be obtained.
You're kidding, after seven years, or how long has it been?
I agree, it's been quite some time, mayor, but we think we have some positive developments.
Actually, nine years, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, this meeting is adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting, that is on Wednesday, April 20th, 2022, 3:30 for closed session. Happy Easter.